January 27, 2014, Urban Renewal Agency meeting to order. A roll call, please, Kathy.
Chair Roger Sprague.
Here.
Dick Anderson.
Here.
Gordon Egleton.
Here.
Gary Ellingson.
Here.
Chester Norakis.
Here.
Wes Ryan.
Here.
Ben Henry Quant.
Here.
Thank you. Are there any citizens present that would like to talk to the agency? Apparently not, so we can go ahead. The minutes of the last meeting, we have those minutes before you. The meeting is November 18, 2013. Are there any corrections or additions, or a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. We have special orders of business. First one is election of officers, chair and vice chair. In January of each year, we elect an agency chair and a vice chair. And at this time, I'd like to open the nominations for agency chairperson.
Mr. Chairman, I'd nominate Roger Sprague as chairman.
There's a second.
I second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to close the nominations.
Second.
I think we got two motions on the floor at the same time.
Okay, sorry.
So I think there's a, the motion is already on there to accept myself, I guess, as chair. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion's carried. We need to elect a vice chair as well. I would like to open the nominations for vice chair.
Mr. Chairman, I'd nominate Henry Quant.
There's a second.
Second.
Any more nominations? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion's carried. We have some project updates. Kurt and Allison. Who's training who?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Allison, are you on first?
I am.
Okay.
Good evening. Okay. The urban renewal property with the house located at 838 Southwest 50th Street in the Taft District was acquired to enlarge our ownership of the neighboring property to the west to allow for a larger and more feasible development sometime in the future. The project acreage in total is about 1.6 acres. And until redevelopment occurs, the interim use of the property for a number of years has been for counseling and transitional housing operated by nonprofit organizations. The most recent lease for the house ended January 31 of 2013. And at the September 24, 2012, agency meeting, it was determined that the best plan for the property, given the age and the need for roof repairs and also the intended future redevelopment, was to demo the structure. The fire district was not interested in doing a practice burn, however, the police department would like to use the structure for a training exercise sometime in February. And Habitat for Humanity was able to remove some building materials to sell in their Lincoln City Restore. And we understand council member Norakis assisted with retrieving some of those usable items, which is wonderful. Thank you for doing that. Staff solicited an invitation to bid and received four bids, the lowest being for $13,600 with JSE Labs, Inc. And here you can see in the PowerPoint, there's a shot of the front of the house, and then here's the backside of the house. So staff recommends approving resolution UR 2014-01, which is on the agenda for your consideration this evening. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I wonder, Allison, you were kind of to put the bids, and there was quite a range of bids. Could you enlighten us as to anything, why such a range? Why for the same project? And I guess I'm most concerned about, you know, two, three locals that were all so high, especially two of them that were way high, higher. Any kind of...
The feedback we got is mostly for the uncertainty of the hazardous material removal.
Ah.
Some weren't as quite as clear as to what that was going to take.
Okay.
So I think that was the feedback that we got.
So the question that leads me to believe, then, say the JSE comes across something more than they anticipated, is that a change order that we then pay up on?
It's highly unlikely, but it's possible. But they also did the assessment of the structure, the hazardous material assessment of the structure prior to the bidding. So then, I didn't realize that when we put it out for, you know, doing an assessment of the building, because we wanted to put that out with the bid, that they also had crews that also did demo work, too, so that they, when they submitted, they said, "We're also would like to bid on it, and when you do, bring it out to bid."
Okay. Thank you.
That information was disclosed to all the bidders.
Yeah.
And I think they were welcome to do their own examination.
Yep. And some did, some visited the site. One inside.
Are you aware of any hazardous materials that they have in the house?
Yeah, there were three items, or maybe four. There were the, nothing, nothing too, too serious. The tar paper on the roof of the garage, the flat tar paper, and the sheet rock material. Not the sheet rock itself, but the mud, I guess, has asbestos in it. But not at a level that requires the same sort of hazmat disposal and tearing it out and stuff. You have to do it under ocean conditions, but not under hazmat conditions.
Any VA tile in the place?
And then there was linoleum in the kitchen, and apparently there's some coating on the bottom of the sinks that has to be handled in a certain manner and trucked away and stored at Hanford or something. I don't know. But it, but those are the two items, but they're really small items.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Chester?
Well, Allison, under budget, we've got other construction, $236,000. What does that refer to?
That's just the amount of money that has been allocated for that line item, and that's what this $13,600 request would come out of.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
One more. Kurt or Allison, after this is demoed, what about long-term maintenance of the property itself? Does urban renewal do that, or do we contract that out? I assume there's some kind of level of cleanliness after the demo that the, this specific job leaves it, and then seeding or whatever we have in mind?
In general, our parks and streets crews are very wonderful with helping to maintain the properties. They're pretty low maintenance, and the contractor is required to, you know, add enough soil to flatten it out and then reseed for erosion. And so it'll be pretty low maintenance, we'll probably just, you know, they won't have to mow around anything.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right. You don't need a...
So your action item is...
Yes or no right now, do you?
Right, it's the resolution later in the meeting.
That isn't covered in the resolution?
No, your action item is to pass the resolution later in the meeting.
That's what I thought. Okay. Okay. So what's the pleasure of the agency?
Well, we'll wait for revolution, or revolution, resolution to come up later on the agenda?
I thought we needed to approve it now, and then the resolution...
No, this is just a staff report, so the resolution, you'll have a chance to discuss it at that point.
Okay, I misunderstood. All right, let's go on to the next item.
So I'm here this evening to talk under levy plan. Over the course of the last several months, the city has taken a keen interest in the buildable lands inventory at the north end of the city, and at the same time, the agency has been, begun to consider the sunset date for the collection of tax increment. The majority of the remaining undeveloped land within the city limits is situated in the north end of the city. The development that has occurred so far, which as you know, is quite considerable, that area is where most, all the franchise wants to be, where most of the development has occurred. And what's happened is that the sanitary sewer and water capacities have been used up in that area. So no major development is able to move forward without some significant upgrades to the systems. And the cost of significant upgrades stops any development from occurring, so it's created this catch-22, if you will. This is just an idea of the amount of land that's up there that's preparing, that could be developed. Also, on this map, I believe, yeah, it shows some of the projects that would need to be addressed in, up in the north area of town in order to make those lands more developable. There's some, there's some street improvements that need to be done, there needs to be upgrades to three of the city's 30 sanitary lift stations. We need to construct a new sewer pump station, a new water pressure pump station, and upsize about two miles of sewer line in that north area of town. As the city of Lincoln City looked forward to addressing those infrastructure needs in the north end, it became apparent that urban renewal might be an option to consider. So staff was asked to consider some options for amending our plan so that we could provide infrastructure funding for that north end area. And also, a plan that would, would not increase our anticipated spending limit, which is what we call maximum indebtedness. Also, that it would allow us to continue to give out our business loan program throughout the city, throughout the district, and allow us to focus on projects that would definitely affect the tax base, and then also allow redevelopment of agency-owned properties. Most importantly, obviously, then, was, is can we come up with a plan that does all of those things, yet also release the majority of the tax increment that the agency currently collects back to the taxing districts, including the Lincoln City General Fund? Staff presented a preliminary plan to, in a workshop, that addressed those above requirements. And following a discussion by this agency, staff was asked to present the under levy plan to each of the overlapping taxing districts. So these are the presentations that we made. The one to Lincoln County also included the extension service and the transportation divisions of the county, so there are three taxing districts within the county. Those presentations have taken place, like I said, and we informed each of them that this evening there would be discussion, they were invited to come and provide any feedback that they might have or might choose to make this evening. We generally heard favorable comments. These were some of the questions that had come up, and I thought, well, if we had these questions during the presentations, there's probably other people that have those questions. So we just wrote them down, and we'll try to answer some of those this evening in my comments here. So the first one, so did the agency consider other options? And the answer to that is yes, the city and the agency considered a lot of options, and we looked most closely at three options. One, start a brand-new urban renewal district to address those needs, continue the existing district and keep collecting the increment as we're collecting now. Or continue the district and release as much increment as we could back to the district. So those, those were the options that we considered. Why does the agency need to spend money in the, in Wacoma area, the north area? And that was because of those serious needs for that major infrastructure in order to be able to get those properties to be developed up there. There was a question about, well, if we spend money up in Wacoma, then we won't have any money to spend, any more money to spend in Taft, or Ocean Lake, or Cutler City, or Nelscott. And I think that the simple answer to that is, that's not the consideration, is whether or not we spend more money in Taft, it's whether or not we continue so that we can spend money in Wacoma Beach. So if this plan doesn't go forth, Taft or Ocean Lake is not going to get more money because of that. Can Devil's Lake be sewed without these upgrades? It's really our opinion that certainly the, there's portions of the lake that could, but there are the portions at the south end that could come around on East Devil's Lake Road, but there's really not that much development there. Most of the development's at the north end, and that would all have to come through, and a system that would have to be upgraded. So before the Niatu area and all that area at the north end of the lake could be sewed, this area, this upgrade would have to take place as well. Why didn't the urban renewal agency meet its spending projections? Because as we told the agent, them, that we are now able to, to have our sunset date match our maximum indebtedness, and we didn't reach our maximum indebtedness like we projected. And there were like three reasons. The main one is, well, we made the projection in 1988, and we did as bad, they did as good as they could. They actually did pretty good, actually. But also, there were some significant lands that were put in trust when the tribes put a portion of the urban renewal district in trust, and so we no longer collected tax from that area. So that, that impacted it. And then also, nobody anticipated this extended economic downturn that we've experienced. So those were all the reasons why we, we still hadn't reached our maximum indebtedness. One question was, can the urban renewal district just go on and on forever? Well, theoretically, yes. There's a vote of the city council and the agency could continue the urban renewal forever, but what we are suggesting is that, that this, what we are, we're saying is that we're not going to exceed 10 years with this under levy plan. Could it be less than 10 years? It could be, but then we wouldn't be able to give as much back to make the significant difference to the budgets of the taxing districts if we didn't, if we went less than 10 years. Those are some of the other comments that, I like the one about Santa Kurt. It was right around Christmas time, and that, some of it, we're really happy to be getting this windfall that they were, we were talking about. I also want to acknowledge those that helped in those presentations. Mr. Hawker, Mayor Anderson, Allison, W. Mamonie, our finance director, attended almost all of the presentations. Ron Tierney, our city's financial planner, was there at the presentations. And then Elaine Howard, our urban renewal consultant, attended many of those, and she's here this evening as well. So we have a depth of knowledge sitting behind me that can answer any of the questions that come up during your discussions. Then that pretty much completes the remarks that I'd prepared for this evening. Your action, then, this evening, is to receive any public comment that there might be, any comment or communication that we might have received from the taxing districts, a discussion of the under levy plan, and then your direction for staff. You have a draft resolution, which is currently being reviewed by our bond council. Indications are, there'll be some minor tweaks to it, but it will come back to you at the February 10 meeting, basically is what you see, so it gives you an idea. We'll get you any changes to it as soon as we hear from, hear, hear of them. But this evening, the resolution's not before you to be passed, it's only to give you an idea of what would need to be passed in order for the, this would be the minor amendment, and this would allow the sunset date to continue beyond June of 2014. And then what will come to you soon after that will be the substantial amendment, which will basically add additional properties to the urban renewal district. So with that, we're ready to answer. Any questions that you might have, or help with your discussion?
Kurt, the district terminates when we reach the maximum indebtedness?
We're no longer able to collect tax increment.
Right.
But we could continue, we don't terminate.
Okay, okay, but the, once the maximum indebtedness occurs, there's no more tax?
Correct.
Okay. Are you done with the PowerPoint?
I am done with mine. If we have the updates for projects on here still, if, but you can turn the lights on. Yes, thank you.
Questions? Yes, Chester?
Oh, on that last slide, Kurt, that last comment regarding the hospital expansion, do you have a response to that? Did somebody ask that question, or did...
Yeah, there was some...
Is that proposal made by somebody?
Yeah, when we were meeting with the hospital district, or I think that's what it's called, there were some questions, they're talking about options of building at the site or building somewhere else. And so there were some discussions about, well, if it was in the urban renewal district, there would probably be some things we could do. Not likely build a hospital, but we could put, help put in the infrastructure, certainly sidewalks, streets, curbs, gotta get the water there, you know, those sorts of things. So there might be some partnerships, yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Chairman, just a comment, as Kurt indicated, I attended just about all of these presentations, and Kurt's really got it down now, I can tell you. Nice, nice job, Kurt. And, you know, after listening to so many of the descriptions of what we're doing helped, and I'm just not sure, I want to make sure the agency members, you know, understand the impact on this. And to me, it's the allowing infrastructure, sewer and water infrastructure into the north end at a level that allows continued and future development. And, and that really, in the north end, for me, is residential, not just the property that the city acquired, but all the other residential land that's up there that hasn't been built upon yet. And Palisades, for example, has a couple of phases left and needs this infrastructure in order to have some homes built. So it's impactful, far beyond just improving the capacity for the villages, but yet, that too, is, is really important. And, you know, I think most of these, for me, the taxing districts realized that, they enjoyed, called Kurt Santa, definitely as he was sprinkling back 80% of the revenue. But Kurt, the other piece that I felt, felt they all realized was, they would feel instant improvement in their tax revenue back with, with improvements that are made, additional improvements that are made. For example, every house that gets built is assessed valued, and they would feel immediate benefit of that assessment the next tax year, or whenever it's assessed. So it wouldn't have this delaying effect that is currently in urban growth, urban renewal areas. So the excitement was pretty wide touched. And I guess my question was, did anybody respond back to you with any written comments after our presentation?
No, we never received any written comments. We've had, we did receive a few comments from some of the local taxing districts, but again, they were all favorable.
Yeah. Okay, that's good. Because that was clearly noted that we would be dealing with this this evening, so.
Other questions? Comments?
I'll comment, Mr. Chair. I, it seems to me you've done a really good job here, Kurt, and whoever was backing you up in terms of not increasing the anticipated spending limit while we can maintain the loan programs, increasing the tax base allows redevelopment of agency-owned properties, and most importantly, a plan that would release the majority of tax increment the agency currently collects back to the taxing districts. Those are a lot of goals that you seem to have achieved. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, and certainly it was a team effort by everybody, especially if it has a number associated with it. Ron Tierney was a great help in those.
Kurt, initially, you were talking about maybe extending the, the urban renewal for maybe two years. Now, is this a longer period of time you're talking about?
Yeah, so this would extend it for 10 years, for no more than 10 years, and, and then we would only collect approximately 20% of what we normally had collected. The other part of it is, the, what, the way it happens now, the increase in, in the value in the district, all goes to the agency. At this point, if we do this, if we do this under levy, we'll be just under levying in a certain amount. And so the, any increase in the district actually will, can start going back to the district immediately. And there's some, some of the taxing districts that are poised really well for this, for example, the school district, which has the development excise tax, so that every house and every commercial development that happens in the county, so in the, in the city, any house that's built, they get a dollar for every square foot of the development. So they were, they were especially excited, and that money all stays in the county for capital improvement.
Do you have the crystal ball on, so you can get an estimate of what it might mean for the agency? Over 10 years?
Well, it's about $7 million.
Okay.
Yeah, we have about, we have about $7 million of capacity left. That's, that matches the need pretty clearly. There'll be some other projects that probably come along during that period of time that we normally work on each year, but the, the bulk of the major improvements is about $7 million.
Okay. Any other comments, your questions? All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, is the action, then, this will just proceed with a resolution at our next meeting? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, at the next meeting, you'll get a resolution that's basically what you have in your, in your packet now, and that will make, move this thing forward.
Okay.
Good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next item on the agenda, public hearings, I guess we have none. We have a resolution for approval, a resolution...
Don't you have project updates?
I thought we just had the project updates.
No.
Oh, excuse me!
Trying to, trying to...
I apologize.
Cut Allison Stein.
Are you going to tell me when I can turn it back on? Okay.
I had project updates at the very beginning of that thing, I'm sorry. Allison, you're on.
Okay, we've got updates on four projects for you this evening. Let's see, first we'll start with the 35th Street parking lot in Nelscott. The design is nearing completion to construct a parking lot on urban renewal-owned property at the corner of Southwest 35th and Highway 101. Last week, we had the project site plan review with the city, and we received a few conditions that we'll be relaying to our designer this week to complete the plans. Some of those items to be addressed are screening, some landscape screening of the parking area, which is along 35th, to help buffer that visually. Some stormwater calculations that were pre and post-development, detention requirements and previous concrete, we'll have to kind of sort through that and look at that again. Bioswale length, they recommend, Public Works recommends to double the length of the bioswale that we have from 50 feet to 100 feet if we do use a bioswale. And the size of parking spaces are labeling as compact, we'll be redoing a little bit of that. Landscaping, we'll need a tree removal permit for any of the mature trees that'll be removed. I think there are two or three that are on the part of the property that will have the parking lot, and so there will be some mitigation and irrigation and sightlines. So quite a few little things that need to be sorted through. And also, ODOT has asked us to adjust the location of the wayfinding signs so that it's not in their right-of-way, but it's on urban renewal-owned property. So those are some of the things we went over. Here's a, an image of the design plan, and keep in mind that this will be built by urban renewal, and then we'll get out of there so that ODOT can come in and build their project connecting back up to ours. So that's why I'm calling it Phase 1, so ODOT will be doing their project. And then, there might need to be a little bit of tweaking to make sure that those come together well later, but that might be a couple of years down the road, one and a half or so years, depending on how the contractor starts their project. I understand that they have a choice about how they will approach the project, whether they start in the north or south, and that's more complicated, so. There are about 10 parking spaces, one of which is accessible, and I think that's it for the parking lot. So once we receive the final plans and bid documents, we'll be ready to bid that project and come back to you with the next steps. The targeted completion date for construction is May 1st, so that we're out of ODOT's way. We also have a Department of State Lands permit, which we heard actually will not be required since the project site is well out of the wetlands area that is on the property. And we have a Public Works right-of-way permit application pending. So, are there any questions on this project?
Let's go on to number two.
Okay. D-Lake traffic signal. This project will remove the wires at the signalized intersection, replacing the signal with mast arms, and include an audible pedestrian crossing and a signal housing reflector to enhance safety and visibility during power outages at nighttime. And this design is complete, we're just waiting for the final plans and bid documents, and we will come back to you with next steps. We also have the ODOT right-of-way permit already for this, so things are kind of lining up.
Mr. Chair? Yes?
Allison, you mentioned the audible signal. Allison, you mentioned the audible signal. And after that, you mentioned another-
Yes.
What was that called?
Well, the, around the signal housings, where the signal red, yellow, green lights are, there's, there's been a suggestion and discussion and a decision about including a reflector so that when cars are driving at night, if that stoplight is not functioning, then people who are not familiar with the neighborhood can see that pretty readily and know that that's a four-way stop. Because we have, sometimes cars will just blow right through the intersection if they can't see that the signal is there and out. So that's just a, kind of a good thing to add.
Thank you.
Okay.
Let's go on.
All right. Moving along to the utility undergrounding. This project undergrounds the overhead utility wires along the west side of Highway 101 from Northwest Second Drive, boring beneath the D River and ends near Southwest Eb Avenue. Since the agency selection of the preferred north and south ends of the project, which we discussed at our last couple of meetings, staff has met with state parks and next week we'll be meeting with kilos to discuss the alignment and future impacts. And after that meeting, then we'll be able to move forward with design and more meetings with D sans and other affected property owners. So we're still getting everybody on board, meeting, discussing, and then we'll come back to you with more updates. Are there any questions on this?
Allison, what kind of response are you getting from property owners that you've contacted?
You know, a couple of them have come in with questions, but for the most part, we've been able to answer their questions. And there is one gentleman who owned a property just on the north side of Second. And he said, oh, so the project's going to end right before my property. And we said, yeah, that's what we're planning. And he said, okay. So most people are understanding and excited about the improvement. He said, you know, that even though it won't go right in front of my house, it'll still benefit the area. So pretty much all positive so far.
Good.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Do you have a target date to have this completed by, you know, hopefully?
Completed by? Starting is maybe an easier question.
Starting.
We obviously have, you know, the parking lot and the traffic signal, which will need to get finished before undergrounding. With undergrounding, we'll have to, we imagine that the bore that goes underneath the D River will be kind of the trickiest and needing to be the most thought out with timing, just because it will take up portions of the parking areas on the state parks and on the kilos sides of the river. So that, we're thinking, will probably be in January of next year. And then the rest of the project can move around the timing of that. So we're thinking start of next year.
Okay. So going back one step, the, the street, the signal replacement, when, what, when is the start date on that?
Probably fall or late fall or winter.
Okay. That's what I was curious.
Yeah, we've got to avoid the summer as we all are used to doing.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, let's move on.
Okay. And the last update, Economic Development Toolbox. Just wanted to remind everyone that all the tools are now available. They're on the website or folks can stop by our office if they'd like information. They include no or low-interest loans and also one grant. There's the facade improvement loan, energy efficiency and business expansion. And then we also have the local program support grant, which is for organizations who are doing economic development, have programs in place that would directly benefit the properties and businesses inside the urban renewal district. In the last couple of months, we've done some marketing efforts, which include obviously the website updates, announcements at local merchant groups and chamber luncheons. We mailed a letter to all property and business owners within the urban renewal district. And we also sent a letter to all the Lincoln City banks to let them know that, you know, please keep us in mind if they have customers that can't meet their criteria, that this might be an option for them. News release to radio and print media and a flyer poster, $5 Friday flyer through the Chamber of Commerce. And then early February, we'll be visiting with the Lincoln County Real Estate Association to let them know about these programs as well. In the last two and a half months, we've had 10 inquiries regarding economic development efforts in general or specifically about the loan program. So we have had more calls or people swinging through. And of those 10, two are working on completing plans or working on our applications. So we expect to have a few more of those trickling in, so.
Cool.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, that's it for this evening.
That's it. Thank you very much, Allison. Now we get to the resolution. This is Resolution Urban Renewal 2014-01, a resolution of the Urban Renewal Agency of Lincoln City approving an award of bid to the JSE Labs Inc. for demolition services for the Southwest 50th Street House. It's the pleasure of the council.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we adopt resolution number UR 2014-01.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It's carried. There's no other business reports?
Or shouldn't we?
Your voice count, voice vote.
Need a roll call on the resolution?
Spending money.
Yeah.
Okay.
Voice vote.
All right. Then let's do a, a roll call.
Okay, for the resolution, Ellingson? Gary?
I just step away.
Okay. Sprague?
Yes.
Norakis?
Yes.
Quampt?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Hilton?
Yes.
And Ellingson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. It did carry unanimously as we thought. Agent member comments?
Would you mind if we could ask staff on that? I didn't get down when we thought we would be either demoing that site or completed with the-
This building?
Demeling, yeah. Just as a little information.
So with the, with the police department hoping to do training in February, they've asked if we could not start it until March. So, and we need to get back to the contractor and make sure that that'll work with their schedule. So we imagine it'll be sometime in March.
And by the end of March, it should be all-
I would think by the end of March, yeah.
Great. Thank you.
I might note while you're talking about that, that we decided to do a formal bid on that and that's why it's before you, because it's well within my purchasing authority. We could have done quotations and awarded on that basis, but we did do a formal advertised bid and a formal bid, we bring it to you.
Okay. Thank you. Agency comments? Anybody have any comments? Hearing none. I'll adjourn the meeting. Cool. You thought we wouldn't get done until-